Alright folks, we're gonna get started. Thanks for coming tonight. My name's Jeff Pritchard. I'm the President of the Bethel Park Volunteer Fire Company. And, uh, we're gonna go through the presentation. Then if you have any questions afterward, we'll be more than happy to entertain any of the questions or comments that you have. Just a few housekeeping things. We're gonna try to wrap up by around 8:30 or so, but if we need to stay longer to take care of any questions for you, we will most certainly do that. As you can see, this is being recorded. We're gonna use this, uh, to run on Channel 7 and for some other, uh, public affairs presentations, so, uh, just so you know, we are being taped. Sorry about that. Our agenda for tonight, we're gonna have a few speakers besides myself. We're gonna have Dave Gerber, who's the Fire Chief for the fire company. You have Greg Pahodich, who's the Vice President. Ed Schmidt, who is our, um, Secretary and also in charge of the Building Committee. And Dennis Ross, who is the Architect for the new building. Any of the residents that are out there, does anybody know what the millage is right now that's allocated to the fire company? Zero. And the other? Zero?
Zero.
Zero. What's the answer? Zero. Absolutely right. We get no direct funding from the municipality at this point. We'd like you to remember that as we go through the presentation. A little bit of the history of the fire company. Eighty-eight years ago, there was a fire on South Park Road. It was a house fire. And there was nobody to call for help. There was no fire company, there were no firefighters, there was no fire trucks, nothing. And unfortunately, a young lady who was a wife and a mother lost her life in that fire. At that point, there were eleven residents and businessmen in this community that decided that they wanted to make a change. So they got together, pooled their money together, and bought a Model T Ford and turned it into a fire truck. Fire truck didn't have much on it. It had a pump, a little bit of water, and some hose. They used rubber boots and, uh, fi- uh, and rubber jackets just basically to keep the water off of them. And for the time being, they didn't even have a place to call it home, so they put it in a residence garage just to keep it out of the weather. As the community grew and they got generous donations from the community, they were able to get another truck and they were finally able to move into the first fire station, which you can see here. It's basically a little shanty, just a place to call it home. Again, as they, as the community grew and the donations grew, the fire company grew. Unfortunately, they were able to get enough money in 1954 to build a fire station. They built this fire station on Brightwood Road. That was fifty-nine years ago, and that's the same building that you folks are in today. The building, of course, had four bays over on the other side, enough to put some other trucks in. We were able to put an aerial truck, rescues, more pumper's. And the community kept on growing. In the seventies, we, uh, acquired the Milford Station and the Clifton Station so that we could take care of the fire prevention on the northern and the southern end of the communities with as quick a sponsor time as possible. Back in the fifties, you know, we were only averaging about ninety calls a year, and most of those fires were brush fires. And we quadrupled the amount of calls that we have now, and you'll see in the slides to come, we'll get some more information about that. About twenty years ago, we did a rehab over on the other side of the building. We basically knocked the whole side of the building off and rebuilt the engine bays. There were several reasons for that. One of the reasons was structurally, this building was not in the greatest shape, and it still isn't. Unfortunately, when they built this building, which they didn't find out until decades later, is when you put fill underneath a building to try to raise the land, you can't do it with old washing machines and box springs because fifty years down the road, it causes major problems, and those are the problems that we have now. The other reason that we did the rehab over there was because the apparatus, the, the trucks were getting bigger and bigger. We needed to carry more supplies onboard and more equipment onboard, and the engine bays just weren't big enough to get the fire trucks in. So we raised the bays to fourteen-foot doors instead of ten or twelve-foot high doors so we could get the apparatus in. But we were still limited to the size that we could expand. We were pretty much landlocked. We couldn't go any further that way, and we couldn't go back any further. At this point, we're pretty much maxed out on the size, and we just don't have any more room for, uh, for any more construction, and the building just can't be rehabbed any further. So that's pretty much where we are at this point. And as we, uh, as we go on with the presentation, you'll get some more explanation as to why we're doing what we're doing. Thank you, Chief. Uh, as most of you folks know, uh, we are currently a hundred percent volunteers at this point. We have no paid staff. Nobody gets a paycheck from being down here. We currently have around eighty-five members. Fifty-five of them are so active. When I say that, I, there's some other guys that have been here twenty-five years or so, which makes them a life member, that they're always a member until they pass away. But they're, they're not here to participate in any firefighting activities. They're here for drills, sometimes they help with fundraisers, things along those lines. But like I says, we have around fifty firefighters and five fire police currently, uh, at this time. Everybody has a normal job. I get up every morning and I'm at work at seven o'clock doing my regular job, which I'm a mechanic. Uh, I'm there until at least three-thirty, you know, Monday through Friday. Uh, sometimes with overtime, I'm there till seven-thirty and stuff in the evening. Uh, other guys that we have here are professional, they're salesmen, lawyers, uh, insurance salesmen, uh, we got guys that are going to college and stuff for school. Everybody here is your normal everyday neighbor, you know, that puts in a forty-hour workweek at least, uh, things along those lines. So, uh, along with that, uh, they come here. This is kind of, I always say this is kinda like, some guys go out and play softball and stuff, uh, in the evenings for their exercise and all. I, I come here for, you know, headaches sometimes, but, uh, you know, we come here to help protect the community, and everybody that, uh, does it, uh, seems to enjoy it here. There is a lot of work and a lot of things that get put into being a member here. Currently, when you become a member, we send you to training, which is always going up, believe it or not. The essential training that, uh, you get right now is up to a hundred and eighty-eight hours of basic training. And what that do is, does is lead you up into your final class, day of class, you put out one fire. So, with all that training, they're teaching you to throw ladders, they're teaching you to, uh, you know, search for people, they're teaching you all kinda hazmat stuff, uh, they're giving you all the basics of what it takes to be a firefighter. So, when you finish with that hundred and eighty-eight hours of training, uh, basically what it gives you is a diploma, so you can go on to do additional training, to learn things like survival, to learn things, uh, like large area searches, uh, you know, basically the hundred and eighty-eight hours is giving you a very basic, uh, set of training. In two thousand and twelve, uh, along with that training, there are also Monday night, uh, training events. Every Monday night down here, we have a drill that normally lasts two to three hours. Uh, and in two thousand and twelve, we spent two thousand one hundred and forty man-hours doing that training. Now that training is not just washing trucks, that training is coming in, uh, practicing pulling hose, throwing ladders, all the essential things that we do, uh, you know, every day at a normal fire, uh, going over all the gas detection equipment and stuff we have, anything that we need to teach the guys or practice updating our skills so that when we come to your house or place of business, we can handle whatever emergency you might have. Along with that, we also spent three hundred and seventy, seventy hours of additional training. Some of the other functions that we perform is we go out of town a lot, uh, to Mount Lebanon and into South Park for what they call a GO team. Basically what that is, is it's a specialized group of firefighters that is set up for a di- for, uh, the company that's actually doing the firefighting that's in the house. If something would happen, as far as a building collapsed, somebody would get hurt, uh, the GO team goes in to rescue those firefighters. We did an additional three hundred and seventy hours of training, uh, for that last year in man-hours. Uh, we also did two thousand and forty-six hours of sending people off to the fire academies. Local fire academies include Washington County, Allegheny County, Westmoreland County. We have guys doing additional training with that. Uh, and that comes out to around eighty-seven hours for each active member, on top of the fire calls that we respond to, on top of the fundraising we do, and things along those lines. And as far as running the fire companies, you see up there, it says that we spent over seventeen thousand man-hours operating, uh, the fire company in two thousand and twelve. I would venture to say it is a lot more than that. I know myself, I spend an awful lot of time doing stuff, and I don't log hardly half the hours that I spend down here, just ask my wife, uh, as far as what's going on. There's always meetings, always things going on that, uh, the chiefs go to. I believe three chiefs were out of town three days last week, uh, attending different meetings and stuff. So, it is a very busy schedule that we put. And along with that, we all have families. I know at my house, that I have a, I have a thirteen-year-old son, a five-year-old son, a one-year-old daughter, and a one-month-old son. So, you know, a lot of thought goes into, uh, our families and stuff because when we're here, we definitely aren't at home, so... Is that the next one? Alright. We respond to, in the area of about four hundred calls a year, that's our average. Along with those, we respond to all different types of fires, vehicle rescues, uh, chemical spills, we've responded to building collapses, we do a lot of odor investigations, uh, we deal with weather problems, people trapped in elevators, fire alarms, carbon monoxide problems, and even the occasional cat in a tree, and that's, no lie, we respond to a couple of them every year, with people with cats stuck in a tree. With that, uh, we've, we've responded to, uh, like I said, a bunch of different things. Everything from building collapses, uh, vehicles into buildings, gas tanks, gas tanks leaking, fires, body recoveries, uh, you know, snowstorms and things like that. Give you a couple examples. I, at the last council meeting, I spoke about, uh, a quick story that I had a gentleman that I work with come up and asked me about the tax that we're looking to, to have and the money. Um, and he, but he, his thought to me was, if we're going to pay a tax for fire service, we are looking, you know, he said, "I expect a professional fire department." Well, to give you an example, my answer to that is, you do have a professional fire department here, you just don't get paid. And I, and I'll get to that shortly. We had a house fire on Sunday that you folks may have seen on the news. Committed seven minutes after one on, uh, Sunday afternoon. The little lady trapped inside the house. We had crews respond. Within six minutes, your fire department was there and had the lady pulled out. I don't think the city of Pittsburgh would cry at those numbers. I think that's fantastic. Unfortunately, she didn't make it, but it's not because of our efforts. She just, the smoke was too great. But, to have somebody from their house, I know the deputy chief was there, he was one of the people to help pull him out. He was dealing with his daughter, who was in college at the time, uh, he was getting her packed back up to go to school. I was sitting at home with my one-month-old son on my lap. We got up, gave my wife the baby, and off we go. And like I said, we responded, was at the call, and had the lady removed from the house within six minutes. That's fantastic time. With that, we got the fire knocked on, things were good, back to normal. I spent the entire afternoon there. I think I got back home around six-thirty or so. Right, Bob? It was about time we were done with the farm marshal and all. Stuff takes up a lot of time, folks, so... A couple of the other things we've done. In two thousand and ten, we had the giant snowstorm, uh, that happened in February. The fire department responded to forty-three calls in the course of seven days. Along with those calls, things were so messed up around town with all the snow and all, we had, uh, warming shelters around. The fire department also, not only responded to those forty-three calls, now I said they've responded, we've responded to forty-three calls over that seven-day period. We responded to thirty-six of them Friday, Friday night through Monday, uh, afternoon. That's a heck of a lot of calls for this department to respond to. Not only with that, we also ended up having to take, uh, some calls down here for, uh... There was warming shelters and stuff set up through, around the town. We had, uh, guys here working the phones as operators, and we took thirty-six people, picked them up for people who didn't have heat, and respond them to the warming shelters and stuff so they could stay warm. We did a heck of a lot, lot of good, uh, over that time. And I believe we had close to fifty members help through that time. I know we had about eight people who didn't go home Friday night. I think I finally got home at, uh, Monday af- Monday after the council meeting, 'cause we went up to the council meeting. With that, once again, my wife was stuck at home with no electricity. She also only had, her had a two-year-old son at home with no heat, no food, things along those lines. So, while my family had their own emergency, obviously, you know, the, and my story's just one of them. I think you can look at anybody in a black shirt, had similar stories, 'cause like I said, we had a lot of people that hung around. The G20 Summit happened in two thousand and nine. As much as there wasn't anything that happened here in Bethel Park or much around Pittsburgh, you had twenty-four people staffed this station for thirty-nine hours straight. We had a couple people here, at least through that. During the days, there was a lot of people, just in case something would happen. Once again, I don't think there's many fire departments around that had that many people here through those two days, just in case something happened. Along with all the fires and stuff that we respond to and all the other emergencies, we also get into the schools. We have guys that go to the school every year and give fire prevention talks. Along with the schools, we go to daycares. Along with the daycares, we go to block parties. You can, can call, request a fire truck, it'll come out to your block parties, show the kids the fire trucks and all. There's a lot of good fire prevention stuff that we do that a lot of people don't even notice. We've been down to South Park shops for fire prevention details. You'll see the trucks up at Home Depot, just to get the word out about fire prevention. Benefits to the community, what else we do? Last year, we were reviewed by ISO. And what ISO is, is, ISO's the leading source for information on property can casually risk, insurance risk. Basically what they do is they come out to the community, they go over the community's water system, they go over their emergency communication system, which is the police's dispatch center up there, and they also review the fire department. With that, they take a look at all the different risks that are in the community, uh, check and see how well the fire department is prepared to handle these risks. They assign a classification to it, as to how well you're prepared for it, and then your insurance carrier, what they do is, uh, with that number, they use it to calculate what you owe for your homeowner's insurance and stuff. Uh, in, up until two thousand and twelve, Bethel Park was a Class Five. I was very proud to announce, I believe it was last July or August, that we reduced our ISO rating down to a Class Four. And that was a very, very big feat for this fire department, uh, to do. There was a lot of work, a lot of people said that we would not be able to do that. A lot of people said that we'd never do that until you got paid firemen here, and we managed to do it with, once again, a hundred percent volunteer fire department. With that, there are two thousand six hundred and seventeen fire districts in Pennsylvania. To show you how good that is, to get down to a Class Four, there are only thirty fire districts out of that twenty-six hundred that are a Class One, Two, or Three. So there's only five, only thirty-five districts that are better than Bethel Park right now as far as their ISO rating, and I think that's a fantastic number. And I'm very proud to say that we were able to do that. And once again, we do this all for free. In two thousand and six, the NFPA said the, or not the NFPA, in two thousand and six, the average Pennsylvania firefighter was annual salary was fifty thousand four hundred and forty-two dollars. That was, what, six years ago? And that's without sal- or that's without benefits, without pension, healthcare, or buying any of the equipment and stuff that we have. Once again, being that we're all volunteers, doesn't mean you don't have a professional fire department. Your house doesn't burn any different if it knows that there's a volunteer fire department or you live in the city of Pittsburgh that has seven hundred career firefighters. Your car doesn't wreck any differently that we come and rescue you out of because there's a volunteer fire department. We need to be trained to help you, number one, when there's an emergency, and number two, you always hear the, uh, old saying, "Playing with fire." That's exactly what we're doing. Not only are we coming to save you, we need to keep ourselves safe. So you have, uh, just like it says in the bottom, Superior Fire and Rescue Services from your volunteers. And I've said this before, I couldn't ask for a prouder group of guys, or couldn't be any prouder of the group of guys that we have and make this community be any safer than the people you have. Everybody here should be very, very thankful for the volunteer fire department that they have. Are you next, Greg, or I got this last one, too? Good? Okay. Thanks.
This can be very difficult for me to, to kinda stand up here. I normally do presentations all day. I've done three of them already today, so, and it's gonna be, I usually walk, so I gotta hold on to everything up here. Um, as Dave was going through, he went through a few things. We talked about the number of volunteers we have. Over the last sixteen months, we've added sixteen new members. That's phenomenal, okay, in getting that many people in and trained. From on top of that, you know, you've got costs associated with that, too. Each firefighter, a minimum, okay, of eight thousand dollars to get outfitted, okay? Then you got on top of that, the training associated with it and the associated things. We've got fourteen emergency vehicles in our community. As you can see, over the years, we've gone from when it was back at one, one Model T, up to fourteen at this point. Again, that has a lot to do with how your ISO rating is also involved with it. Got four hundred calls in two thousand and two, manned over seventeen thousand man-hours, three stations that cover twelve square, square miles. There's not very many communities can state that they have that many fire companies in their community, okay, and all volunteer. Our yearly budget, and this is a very important number that, that I want everybody to see, our yearly budget to run the fire company is a little bit over, uh, half a million dollars. We have done that for the last eighty-five years on donations and then on state money. That is the only way we have done that, okay? It's not, it has not been easy. As everybody knows, things have changed over the years, okay? As, as the costs go up, okay? One of the bad, the worst parts of this is our donations go down, okay? We have seen a decrease of about fourteen percent per year. Going on fourteen percent decrease each year is not gonna allow us to continue on what we're doing. That makes it very, very difficult. Why are we here tonight? Okay? Obviously, the reason is, we out, we have outlived the fire station that we're in, okay? If you can see, over the years, things have changed. Going back to where we were when the original station was here, majority of the calls that they answered was for brush fires. If you think about the number of houses that have been added to the community, it's amazing. Right at this point, right at this point, we have, have gone to a point where you really look, there's not a lot of land left for, for, uh, for firefighting. Here we go, another call. It's two calls we've had in the last, was it half an hour? The, uh, the point where we're at is, you know, we've gone to, to houses, okay, rather than fields, buildings, the, the equipment that we need to handle that. You know, we've got high rises, which in turn means we gotta have, have the proper equipment to handle that also, okay? The current buildings, as we discussed, the building you're staying, you're in right now, okay? The condition is deteriorating, okay? A lot of, we're gonna encourage you after this to walk around, take a look at the building. If you guys could take a look at the floor now, you could see, uh, around the floor, how the floor moves. The, the floor actually moves between summer, okay, and winter, the floor actually moves approximately one inch up and down. Uh, you could probably walk over to this wall over here, you could slide your fingers in, you could feel the air coming from the outside. What we have done is, we've, we've taken, you know, this whole thing very serious, and this is not something we just did overnight. For about the last five years, we've really looked at things. We've worked with the community, with the municipality. We've researched what we needed to do here. We had an independent company come in and assess things for us. You know, we, as you see, we, we've taken a piece of this over the years, we've been, we rebuilt, okay? A lot of people say, "Oh, why do you need these fu- uh, shiny fire truck, new fire trucks? You really don't need that. Why don't you just fix up what you have?" Well, guess what we have? The, uh, the truck that you see right there, okay, right now, we've actually had that one for eleven years now, okay? We replaced the thirty-five-year-old fire truck to bring that one in. We've had that eleven years. So we take care of the stuff that we have. We've taken care of the buildings that we have. We take care of our equipment, okay? So, you know, people come in and say, "Oh, you just need shiny trucks." Well, yeah, they're shiny because we take care of them. Just like somebody has their classic car, it's shiny, they took care of it. It's the way it is. It's how we, how we do things. But things have changed. You know, right now, we can't operate, okay, on thirty-five percent of the residents in the community donating. That's all we get, thirty-five percent. Ten percent of the businesses can't operate like that. It's not fair to the other people in the community. We can't continue to do what we're doing. We're trying to figure out what, what were our options? How do we handle this? What do we do with it? You know, I've got the feasibility study here that we did on the building, talking about the building. Why, why do we need to do something with the building? There's two-point-eight million dollars worth of repairs that we need to do to the building to get, to get it where it would be good again. The, overall, the last page, okay, of this, of this statement, okay, the very last page basically says in there, "The only option you have is to rebuild." So that's what we had to do, and that's why we've taken the time. This is not something that we, we've decided to just do overnight. This is something that's taken the time. These guys, every one of the guys, even the guys that just left on the fire trucks, okay, take pride in everything we have here. We, we didn't wanna go to a different way. We don't wanna go to another way. We've always considered and thought about, we wanna continue on doing what we do. We're proud of that we made it eighty-five years for this community. If you think about the amount of money it takes to run a fire company, it's a lot. The amount of money that we've saved the community is amazing. We've got communities around us that are, that are paid, okay? An example, it's four-point-one million dollars for Mount Lebanon to run their fire department. If we can, if we would've been a paid fire company, consider that, what it would've done to your taxes at that point. We didn't do that. We're not asking for that. Alright, so again, you know, we went through, there's a lot of things go, going on with the building, okay? We encourage you to walk around, take a look. If anybody wants to look the report, I'd be more than happy to give it to them to look at it. Alright? So after the meeting, please, this, all the firemen will be here to talk, talk about everything going on. Dennis, I think this is you at this point.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Dennis Ross. I'm with Pacheco Ross Architects, um, the architect that's working on the proposed new building here, and I thank all of you for showing up tonight. We really appreciate you guys coming out to see what a great job the volunteers are doing here. Also, before I even get started, um, just so you know, our company works on nothing but what we call public safety buildings. It's fire, police, EMS, nine-one-one call centers, and, and those sorts of buildings. We work all over the US and Canada, and I can tell you, we work with lots and lots of volunteers, and for these guys to go from an ISO five to a four is a huge feat, and something that our company in twenty years of business hasn't witnessed very often. What it does, obviously, is save all of you and the businesses here on your insurance. So I, again, I have to congratulate these guys, 'cause it's just an amazing feat. Alright, so what else has changed since, uh, these guys started all those years ago? If you can get that, otherwise I'll just press them, I don't care. Codes and standards, alright? Not only are the firefighters held to all sorts of training regimens, um, they have all sorts of things they have to adhere to. If you look up in the left-hand corner, NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, gives hundreds of standards that they train to, that their equipment works with, um, EFMIA, Homeland Security. These are all, also standards that their building has to conform to. Why? Because unlike your home, unlike your shopping center... Why? Because unlike your home, unlike your shopping center, a fire station is a working facility. It's a twenty-four-seven, three-hundred-sixty-five-day-a-year facility, gets used hard, put away wet, and it's always in use and could be in use at any moment. So there's lots of codes, lots of standards that, that tell us as architects what we have to do to accommodate the good work that they do. I think on the next one. Here we go. What we're looking at here is just a Google map of the existing site. We're on Brightwood Road, right here. Building's here. This is that big concrete tarmac, and we are sitting right in that room there. One of the things I do wanna say that, on the previous slide, fire stations are what are considered essential service facilities, all right? What does that mean? It means when there's a problem, whether it's a nor'easter, a storm, train wreck, whatever it may be, it's one of those facilities that absolutely, positively must operate. Fire stations, police stations, EMS facilities, hospitals, nuclear power plants, those are some of the things that are in this essential service facility category. And I think everybody learned when Hurricane Katrina hit in New Orleans, and all those essential services did not work. Everything came to a screeching halt, and, and people were hurt, and the community suffered, and they're still recovering to this very day, all these years later. So what does that mean? It means when we design these facilities, we design them to a much higher standard, and they are constructed to a much higher standard. So I just wanted to let you know. All right, so what do we as architects do to actually get this process going? I mean, we don't just sit down and draw pretty pictures, especially of a facility like this. So there's a whole process we go through to make sure that the building, and what we're doing is both flexible, cost-effective, that it actually serves the purpose of the volunteers and lets them do what they need to do. So we start the process with what's called a program, and you can see here just a page, if you will, out of our program. We as architects sit down with the building committee, and in this case, not only the building committee, but chiefs, assistant chiefs, firefighters, and we actually mine information out of their heads. They know how they fight fires, they know how they respond, they know what their operations are, and we need to get that information out and put it on paper because that's what we use to design with. So we take that and we do this program, and, and we have a very long, intensive meeting. We have a lot of back and forth, a lot of dialogue. And we produce this program, and what it is, it talks about what the station needs to be, how it needs to operate. You know, it needs, you know, six bays, needs meeting room, it needs support space, it needs a generator, and on and on and on, and we get it into great detail. Because we've done and worked on over two hundred fire stations, we're able to take that information. And then you see this page, we actually take the information, just let's use the bays as an example, and we say, okay, if we have six bays, we have a ladder truck, an engine, a tanker, rescue truck, et cetera, et cetera. They fight fires, they do ice and water rescue, we know what kind of equipment means. We know that takes up X, Y, Z amount of space, and we do that with every single space in the building. So we're looking, you know, not just an office is eight by ten, but what are you using the office for, and can we overlap the use? What kind of support spaces support the response of the bays? When you just saw your volunteers go out here on this call, they didn't just rush out of here, hop onto the equipment and drive away. They have to put on protective gear. They have to know they're taking the correct vehicle with the correct equipment in it for the particular call. All that has to be part of the building so that they can respond, and that's our job. So we take all that information, come up with the sizes, the space, our first initial budget, and then this programming tool, if you will, is what we use as designers to actually then make a physical building out of it. So that's how we get the process started. Take the same site. We're still on Brightwood Road. All right, still have an apron. And now we look at taking this building and how it's gonna fit on the site, how can we do that cost-effectively? And for any of you who are familiar with this, you know, we're very low down here, property goes out back there, and we have this slope to deal with. So now we're gonna try and put this fire station on this slope site. We wanna make sure it's cost-effective. We wanna make sure that when fire trucks are sitting out there, they're sitting level, they're not climbing too high to Brightwood Road. So we're doing this balancing act between where are the roads, where's the building, and again, how do we do it within budget and cost-effectively? So that's when we start doing this, you know, what architects do, we start drawing plans. In this case, again, Brightwood Road, the way we're facing, Brightwood Road is out here. These are the apparatus bays. So you can see the ladder truck here. I bet you can hear me. Okay, thank you. The ladder truck is here, engines, rescue, and some of the spaces I talked to you about, support spaces, for example, workroom, air room, decon, disinfecting, if you will, lockers for that very expensive bunker gear, generator, and then some bunks that could serve two purposes. One, certainly if there's gonna be a nor'easter or a storm or something, that the volunteers will now actually have a, a safe, proper living environment to stay overnight for a night or two. Or the other thing you can do, and we've seen this done both here in Pennsylvania, New York, and a lot of other places that we're working, start what we call a bunker program. And whether they are starting one or not, at least it gives them the ability. And what that is, is that's where you invite college students to be firefighters. You actually start a contract program, and they're students, they're firefighters, they have to maintain averages of a beep or better, et cetera, et cetera, and, you know, they have to train and do all these things. So it gives them the possibility. It's a great way to attract new volunteers, and it certainly takes care of the existing volunteers. So we do have proper living space. And then on the second floor, if you will, which is the second floor, but if you watch, what I was gonna try and show you, and I don't know if we're gonna make the computer work, but this so-called second floor actually fits partially over this, all right? And what we have up here are office spaces, small kitchen and dining, meeting room for training and meeting for firefighters and the community. And, and I wish I could get it to work, but what it does is, by sliding over the bays that way, it's actually using the slope of the site. So we're keeping the cut and fill down, and by keeping that down, we're keeping the cost down. The other thing that we've done, you heard from the chief, you saw these slide in, you'll see it in a moment. There's a training tower. You see mezzanine and tower plans? That's actually for training regiments. And what that does is it brings the firefighters back into the building to do the training. They don't have to go to Lebanon to do it. They can do it here. So they can do things like confined space and blackout, and, and design training activities right here to help them learn. All right, so you can see the tower here. And it's a little dark, but trust me, there's a bailout window here and a bailout window here. The tower has three different levels with a stairwell in it, dry sprinkler in it. There's so many things they can do. They could probably design twenty or thirty different types of training regiments with repelling, stair and ladder exercises, train inside and outside the tower, and it, it, we have most of that space available anyway. We're just using it now for a different purpose. So much of the space, certainly all the floor space, already exists. The second floor mezzanine already exists in the design. Just building this thing a little taller, we're able to create this fantastic use that they can use this for training. See five bays, and a little hard to read, but as we go behind the station, you can kind of see the slope right here. And then again, Brightwood Avenue is right here. Building, and again, the colors, I apologize, aren't showing real well, but we're looking at all masonry, most likely brick, because brick is made right here in Pennsylvania. It's local material. Metal roof, just like on the recreation center behind us here. All good, solid, commercial materials. And we're just gonna move around the building here. So as we move around the building, on this side, right here, we have the bakery. We have a secondary entrance here. We have a firefighter entrance right here. And then on the other side of the building, you can see the entire scale of the project changes because on the other side of the building, we have residences. It's a much smaller type of scale. So you're not seeing the tall bays, the two-story. It's much more subdued, much more residential in scale. Again, same materials, brick, metal roof, double-hung windows. They can actually open. You can let air and light in. And then just the last one as we go around. And again, using the slope on the site, you can see we've provided the ladder truck with what's called a drive-through. So they can actually pull up from the back, drive the truck through because of its fifty-foot length and the size of the truck, and then pull it out again, just a much safer and easier way for the volunteers to use the vehicle. So where are some of the highlights of the building? First things first, it should be fifty to seventy-five years that this building is standing. Certainly, if you're gonna use public dollars for any kind of fire, police, or EMS station, it should last a long time. So in order to make it last a long time, again, we use commercial-grade materials, commercial contractors. But we wanna make it cost-effective. So we're putting in energy efficiencies, very high levels of insulation, what we call dual-glazed low-E glass. What that does is it keeps heat from going out, keeps sunlight from coming in on the summer to keep your air conditioning loads down. In-floor radiant heat in the apparatus bays. We've used that in the northeast and probably fifty different stations. It's about as cost-effective heating as you can get. What it actually is, is in the concrete slab, we have tubes. You just run low-temperature water, about ninety to a hundred degrees. Comes out of boilers that are tankless, high-efficiency, ninety-eight percent efficient boilers. And you just run water through the slab. When the slab heats up, it holds its heat. So what you do is you just put a thermostat in the building, one outside. The two thermostats talk to each other, keeps the bay at about maybe sixty degrees, extremely comfortable because the heat's coming up, and it's just amazingly cost-effective. Using water-saving devices on sinks, toilets, setback thermostats to keep the heat down. Again, it's a volunteer station. They may not be here all the time, so we can keep the heat down when they're not. Occupancy sensors, that's for when you walk in a room, lights can turn out. When you walk out, if you forget to turn the switch off, they'll turn it off for you. Circulation pumps, high-efficiency HVAC units for the living side of the station, energy-saving light fixtures, which these certainly are not. Lots of weather stripping, seals, foam protection, all very common sense, off-the-shelf stuff. Pipe and duct insulation all throughout. Again, very common, very off-the-shelf. We do the same thing for the site. Again, Brightwood Avenue, bays here. Your building, some parking out and back on Park Avenue. But again, we're looking for the same kinds of efficiencies on your site. Again, to make it operate correctly, save money. So we're looking at onsite drainage and stormwater protection. Construction activity pollution prevention.